So that's so nice. Oh, that's really nice. There we go. How's everybody doing this evening? Good, good. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Who's, uh, Troy did the last one? Or John, did you do the last one?
I did.
All right. Dwayne, you're up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call.
Troy Anderson.
Present.
Drake Bean.
Present.
Dwayne Bebo.
Present.
Eric Bierstein.
Here.
John Beartrud.
Here.
Christopher Cadwick.
Here.
Carrie Yolker.
Present.
Jason Miller.
Present.
Jacob Trudeau.
All right, and before we get on to the approval of the agenda, I'm going to move that we amend the agenda to add language to our proposed executive session, adding the language and to discuss proposed pending or current litigation. Is there a second? Anderson. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Resolve that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the amended agenda. We have a motion.
Motion. I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Presentations. Topics. CSE and CPSE trends and projections. And that's going to be presented by the Assistant Superintendent of Special Services, Polly Traverna, and Director of Pupil Personnel, Nick Pepe.
Where is Troy Anderson?
I'll have to...
No, no, has his horse carved. That's horse carved.
Okay. So we have our presentation, starting with just our Special Education District Plan, which was just adopted in October by the Board. So I'm not going to go over a lot of that, but it does go into more detail about the policies we have related to special education and all the areas that we need to report on to the State for Special Education. So that's linked there for anybody to reference. And then our regulations that we always have to look at and go by, the federal regulations, which is IDEA, and then, of course, New York State is Part 2021, which is regarding discipline. We're always reviewing field demos that come out, different letters that come out from the government. Our blueprint, which is probably nine years old now, but it's still referenced a lot by the state and talks about, you know, the important practices in special education that we need to be aimed for. And then case law that comes out. We have certification considerations. And we do, we have monthly meetings with our regional associate from the State Education Department and the local CSE directors for Clinton Exorcist or Washington Bosse's, all get together monthly. And these are some recent demos and guidance that have come out from the state. So there's just an idea of all the things that we always are looking at and have to follow for the Special Education Department. IDEA, which is the big federal law about special education, making sure, you know, those are the six pillars, that we are providing a free appropriate education evaluation. So if a student is referred for special education, we have to have parent permission to evaluate that, and it has to be done within sixty calendar days. So that's important, that we have to develop individualized education plans for students and review them annually. We have to look at least restrictive environment all the time, which we will get into a little bit more. We, of course, want parent participation, and that's essential. And then the procedural safeguards are their protections for parents and students so that they can request an impartial hearing or mediation, or they get filed complaints with the State Education Department should there be concerns. And just an overview of what special education is, right? Especially designed instruction. So adapting the content, delivery, and methodology to, with those, in the least restrictive environment, it might be programs or services in order for the students to access the general education curriculum. Right now, our department, this is what we currently have in elementary schools. We have integrated co-teaching services. We have special classes, including eight-one-ones and twelve-one-three-one programs. Middle school, we also have integrated co-teaching and special classes. We have eight-one-one classroom and twelve-one-one classroom. And then at the high school, we have fifteen-one classrooms and eight-one-one classroom, which is new this year. And we also provide consultant teacher services, both direct and indirect. So the direct is if a special education teacher is working directly with the students. And the indirect is the special education teacher consulting with the general education teachers. And then we offer resource room services as well. This is our current stat. It certainly won't go through all of you, but you can see it there. And just as a comparison, in eighteen nineteen, we had thirty-four special education teachers. So that's increased. And we also had forty-one teacher aides compared to the sixty-nine current teacher aides. We've also added a certified occupational therapist assistant, a school psychologist, and two career counselors since that time. Just looking at our numbers, it's been fairly consistent over time. Right now, our twenty-four, twenty-five data is not finalized, but looking at our state data, we have three hundred and thirty-two, it looks like, school-age students with disabilities and forty-two preschool students. That's October.
This is our classification rate. Seventy-two percent less than the date is official. It's just about the state average in New York State for the Clinton Exorcist or Washington Bosse's, which were ten out of sixteen schools. And those numbers range from twelve and a half percent up to thirty-three percent. Next slide is about least restrictive environment. It's probably the main thread throughout the federal IDEA law. The law dates back to the seventies. There's a, there's a big deal in Washington. Geraldo Rivera is still on TV today, but that was his big break. He went to a private school in New York State, Willowbrook in Staten Island. And there's cameras and pictures, and there were students, very much likely have students in this building today, but, you know, they were, they were naked. They were in cages. They're not creating, they're kind of in cribs all day long. They're covering feces. They're not receiving an education. And that was the impetus behind the Individual Disability Educational Act. So that least restrictive environment is paramount to the law. And then there's a few different parts of it, but the main aspect is that students should be around their same age, not as able peers to the greatest extent possible. There's, so part of what we have to do every time we hold a special education meeting, and then last year, I think we had approximately eight hundred such meetings, is always to ensure that the student is in the least restrictive setting. Like Ms. Taverly mentioned, we have increased supports, including, you know, you know, forty-one to sixty-nine aides. So one part of the law, that's kind of the bottom bullet, it shows up once again. We can't say a student is not able to be around their same age, disabled peers, or not as able peer until we put in all addition, or, you know, all possible supports to help them stay in that setting, including things like behavior plans or structural supports, including an aide as well. This is the, what's called Continuum of Special Education Services. These are all the placement options available to a school district in New York State. So the first one, so you can be classified, and being just a regular classmate, we don't need specialized instruction. You may just need speech services, that would be the next one, related services. Consultant teacher, integrated co-teaching are very similar. Resource rooms typically at the high school level, a lot of it is done. Instead of going to a study hall, you go to a setting with only four other students plus a special education teacher. Our special class programs don't contain gendered students. And then at the top of the pyramid, added districts that could include CDES. In this region, there's no other day facilities. Once you get around, probably south of Saratoga Springs, there's other entities besides Bosse's where you can send children for the day. The next two, sometimes, it depends which one is more restrictive or not, but depending on potential medical need, or in rare cases, even a behavioral need, students can be educated at home, typically before that. At the top of the pyramid, that's a residential placement. The one kind of quirk in the regulations is, which is, applies, because we are closer to Vermont, the courts have ruled that a placement in Buffalo, since it's in New York State, is less restricted than, say, a placement in Vermont, even though one is closer than the other. So that, those are our continuum. And part of IDEA is that, you know, we're obligated to provide all students free to the families, free and appropriate public education, regardless of where they may fall in that continuum. So this is that same quote from the law again, that you have to kind of go through everything possible before removing the child from the presence of their non-stable peers. And part, so when you start to read IDEA, because I know you will for fun one day if you have it, the preamble of law, the introductory pages of the law, is just a young congressman, Sanders, congresspeople is giving speeches, attesting to why they want to pass the law. It includes a lot of the research that shows that for students with disabilities, being around non-stable peers is to their benefit. And part of it also, there's an overdue decision, so sometimes case law, once, once a court rules something, you know, we're expected to follow suit. They've also pointed out the benefits to non-stable peers, that, you know, being around non-stable peers as well.
Just to share some data with you on least restrictive environment. And you can see, and I have it in graph form as well, which is a little bit there. So we've gradually gone up in meeting. This is one of the main indicators we report on, students with disabilities who spend eighty percent or more of their day in general education program. So that's a big factor when we report them here. And we can see we've gradually improved. Every year, we have a target to meet. If you look at this graph, the red is the number of students that we have with disabilities, eighty percent or more in that general education program. The green is the state target. So we didn't start meeting that until the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. You can see we started surpassing that green line. And then the lighter colors are if students with disabilities are less than forty percent of the day in general education. And then, so you want to be below the green line in that case, then we just started meeting that twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, that's the comparative, and that's our graduation rate to increase over the years, which is something we continue to work on, but we have seen improvements in. And of course, our dropout rate, which we always wanted to improve. Some scores I wanted to share with you to highlight. These are recently released Regents scores. And of course, this isn't, right now, this is how we measure, right? Students get a diploma and how we measure how they're doing in high school. It doesn't just speak to high school, though. It speaks to their education throughout. And you can see, so this is the English Regents exam. So students that scored proficient level three or four, we are ranked, this is in the Clinton Exorcist or Washington Bosse's area, so we are ranked first in the English exam, second in the Algebra I Regents, second in Living Environment, Oklahoma History is third, U.S. History is first. And then, just to give you an idea, we also have the Earth Science Regents. We were five out of the eleven other districts. Geometry and Algebra II, we also did very well in. And a lot of districts are not, their students with disabilities are not taking those exams, so there's not many districts listed, it's not the more or two. So we do have students with disabilities challenging more Regents exams, Earth Science, and Algebra II and Geometry, and doing very well. Additional support, so this is this year. We are adding teaching assistance to our special classes instead of a classroom aid. Depending on the district of the school, they have, you can have as part of that ratio, an eight-one-one or twelve-one-one, that second staff member could be an aide or an assistant. And we've changed to looking at teaching assistance for those special classes, which helps with, because teaching assistance can provide instruction where that needs. So we're hoping that helps with support in the classroom. And right now, I think we have three, and we're looking at hiring one more. And hopefully, it also helps with retention and keeping stuff. So we've also increased, as you saw, teachers in other areas and are providing more professional development than in the past.
So as I mentioned before, one of our placement options, our schools outside of an in-district, but the only local one we have is CDES. There are numbers, there's been a slight increase over the years in some of the students that we placed there. But half of them are students who they happen to move to Beaventown, but they were already attending CBS, placing another district. This number of those increases, it will remain somewhat stagnant only because there's no room at CBS at the moment. They're, right now, the campus is shared between CV Tech and CDES. Starting next fall, they're doing construction to make a separate CV Tech facility. And they're hoping that that will, if they can staff it, they'll be able to open up more classrooms at CDES for students with disabilities. These are Section 504 plans. They're slightly different than IDPs. The name comes from the five hundred and fourth section of the American Disabilities Act. It mentions school-based accommodations for the disabilities. The main difference between the two is that 504 plan typically does not include specialized instruction or support from a special education teacher. So this can range from students with maybe a medical need, maybe a food allergy, could be some diabetic-based needs, seizure needs, ADHD needs. So typical, typical things are testing accommodations, classroom accommodations, ability, you know, some kids, I know people don't have cell phones, some kids have their insulin pumps connected to their phones. So there's accommodations for them based upon that. There's been an increase over the last few years, and it's nationwide. The most common ones are ADHD and anxiety, which are allowable combined disabilities for special accommodation plans. So McKenney-Vento, McKenney-Vento Act, used to be called, students used to be called holes, but the state's recommend that you call them McKenney-Vento students. So these are students who lose housing and are considered to lack a fixed or adequate nighttime residence. So this can be, they're living in a camper, they're living in tents, they're living in vehicles. They are, the most common one you see, however, is they are doubled up, meaning they had to move in with another family, friends, et cetera. Now, there's some qualifiers to this. It could be a financial reason that would cause you to move in with somebody else. And so the benefit to being a McKenney-Vento student is if, if you lose your housing in Beaventown, say there's something unfortunate, like a house fire, and you lose your housing in Beaventown, and you end up at your grandparents' house in Peru, and you're doubled up, the students can continue to attend Beaventown School for the rest of the school year. It's free visited again at the end of the school year. If a child in that time does find permanent and adequate housing, say, in Peru or Platteville District at the start of the next school year, they would have to enroll in that district. Families also have the benefit, say that same situation as a house fire, they moved to Peru. They can also enroll in Peru School District without delay, without the typical registration process. Most families choose to stay in the child's current school, although it has, some families, towards the end of the school year, they do prefer to move to give the students a chance to make some new friends before the start of the next school year. And there's also some funding connected to this. It's partly, also, often comes out of the purposes. Things like, we have to expense funds that help students attend school and participate. So it could be jackets, or snow pants, or boots that go outside at recess. It could be immunizations to help them attend school, to meet the other state requirements. A lot, a lot of clothing-based items for these children. So this is our homeless rate. We're typically up high for the region. Part oh-one, part I did mention, you're also homeless if you have to live in a hotel. And most of the hotels are in the Beaventown District. So America's best company, Footy Block, Quinta, Rip Van Winkle, City Hotel, things called the Makin', those are all in the Beaventown District. So if a child just arrives at Platteville and ends up in a hotel just for a matter of, if it was one night, they're considered homeless. And then, of course, they're, they're going to be a residency even when they find other housing. So McKenney-Vento reimbursed it. I actually had last year's number, last year's number was, I think, five hundred and three thousand. So when a student becomes McKenney-Vento eligible and they arrive in Beaventown, but they lost their housing in another district, say they were attending school in Skirren Lake and ended up here, we can do some paperwork to reimburse a portion of those costs from the state. So last year, around half a million dollars. Ten years ago, it was zero, weren't doing paperwork, so it's, uh, it's nice to just report more time to through the process. So these are our foster care numbers. So we've kind of tracked two different groups of foster care students. There are students who, very similar to McKenney-Vento, they may enter foster care in another district and then be placed into foster care, living within Beaventown. And then we can bill that district of origin for those, some of those costs. But likewise, we track the opposite. If a Beaventown child enters foster care in Beaventown, and then they move to another district, we remain responsible for the child's educational costs until they leave school system entirely. So ELL stands for English Language Learners. Typically, we've been somewhat consistent over the last couple of years. We're having twenty-two, twenty-three students. These are students who come to us with limited English speaking abilities. We have to assess them when they do arrive within ten days and then test them annually to see if they still continue qualifying for services. And to meet this need, we do have, currently, we have three ELL tutors. The children can qualify from anywhere from one hour to up to six hours a week of additional instruction, depending on how they're doing their testing. And there's our rate, it's not, and that, that rate is fairly low. It's relatively high, but the number is still low. Typically, we're, you know, under two percent of our population. If we ever have twenty percent of one grade, having twenty percent of students are English Language Learners, we require to have an ELL program, which is a little bit different than what we're doing now. We require two teachers in each classroom. However, anyone anticipate us reaching those numbers anytime soon?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the number that was kind of that threshold?
Twenty percent in one grade level.
Oh, I understand.
And we're only at under two percent of the district. And it's an odd, odd quarter, because it must be housing-based. There's, I think, seventeen English Language Learners at Cumberland Elementary School. And we haven't had one yet at Beaventown Elementary School. I think some employment or housing opportunities are a little bit different between two elementary schools.
Just some summary of our data. As I mentioned, we have to monitor a lot of different areas, including least restrictive environment, disproportionality, and suspensions, parent involvement, timely evaluations, post-school outcomes, transition services, any hearing requests or mediation. So this is, these are just the highlights of areas that we do meet or exceed the targets out of the graduation rate, dropout suspension, parent involvement, and then LRE. And then we do not meet the target for participation rate in the grade three to eighth seat assessments because of opt-outs, which is fairly common across districts in the area that students count out of the assessment. And the goal of the target is ninety-five percent participation rate. And we typically had around fifty percent participation rate. So it's not a real accurate indicator of performance.
And that's strictly because those parents are kicking out of taking...
Yes, so the parents may opt the students out. And so we don't know because of the small number of students taking the exams, and it might be the students, you know, different population of students whose parents will opt them out versus parents that... So as far as goals that we continue to look at in special education, we always want to increase our graduation rate for students with disabilities and decrease the dropout rate. Obviously, continue the time in general education setting, including integrated job sites and getting out in community more for workplace learning. That is a goal as well. And then we always address programs based on student needs. So for example, in the spring, we meet with the co-teachers and talk about each team and talk about what they need for support, what recommendations are, what other things we can do. Try to ask them to think of, you know, are there other programs we can develop? What is, what can we do to improve the goals? And then always looking at our progress monitoring and making sure that we're collecting and keeping data on students' progress towards our goals is essential and whether they're meeting those annual goals. And then we implemented a different related service model this year. It's called three-to-one model. But we were finding, so with our speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists especially, they were working, so they might have nine sessions they can fit in during the day, and they're back-to-back sessions. But they also have evaluations to complete, screenings to complete, Medicaid notes to complete, the preschool portal to complete. So there's a lot of things, makeup sessions when students are out that they were not having time for or time to collaborate with teachers, because ideally, we want to provide those services that are related to their performance in the classroom and how can they work with a teacher to work on the same skills and improve those areas. So they are working direct service four days and then one day indirect, consulting with teachers. We make up sessions and we do evaluations. And we're kind of monitoring that, to see how that goes this year and if it helps with making sure we're meeting our service delivery and provide health sessions that we need to.
So what does the three-one mean?
Well, some districts do it as like a three-week direct service, one week indirect. We're doing it more as four days direct, one day. So because the providers felt, you know, we agree that you don't want necessarily to have that big chunk of time where students aren't getting the direct services today. It's a dropout rate. Some of our challenges, obviously, you're aware, we have challenges staffing some positions, teacher aides, even finding certified special education teachers and related service providers are challenged. Our lack of preschool providers, this just came out in the State Councilors article this weekend about across the state, there are not enough preschool providers to provide itinerant services or school-based services for students. We recently posted an itinerant to try and get more people to provide services, and we offer our own staff that opportunity as well for students at home that aren't receiving anything. We do have our own preschool program, a preschool program to help our district quite a bit with preschool services. Outside placements, as Nick mentioned, there are no CBS openings, which is very challenging because there are no placements for students that might need a more restrictive setting, which may result in, like a student looking at, okay, we may need to look at a residential placement because we can't find a CBS placement here. Kind of having to go more restrictive. But finding residential placements is also a challenge. That's not an easy task, I think. So that has been a big challenge. There are, there's more, we're trying to have more collaboration between districts. So that, if, we obviously want bigger districts, but if a smaller district moves in fact with other bigger districts and say, you have a program that we can center a student to, that, that's happening a little bit more in our area. New graduation measures that are coming out, so it's going to look different. And we don't know exactly when it's going to look like yet, but we're going to have... and we don't know exactly when it's going to look like yet, but we're going to have to adjust. And it's a good opportunity to look at different ways, pathways for students in getting a diploma. So we'll be looking at that. The transportation, so associated to, as Nick mentioned with McKinney Vento, for instance, if we have a student who's deemed homeless, we are required to help with transportation for that student with up to fifty miles. We're helping also with foster care students' transportation. And although we get reimbursement, the challenge is more about having enough bus drivers to actually provide that and have the time to go a distance and bring them back to the district. So that's a big challenge in transportation. And we can offer parents reimbursement to transport their students, but obviously not all parents are able to do that. And then again, we have across the nation, right? There's an increase in diagnoses that we're finding, you know, we need to support and related to the increase in section five of the feds. So those are all areas that we're working on. Question for us?
A couple of facts, all right.
Sure.
We talked about different types of classrooms. And I'm just curious, so I mean, so we have A-one ones, twelve-one, three ones. Do we have or have the ability to have all of those types of classrooms at each grade level? Or are there certain levels that have certain types of classes?
It depends on the number of students. So when we look at planning every year, so at the end of the year, the teachers all make their recommendations with their students based on, you know, what their student progress and what they recommend the placement the following year. And then CSC meets and makes up the determination and we buy the teacher recommendation. So if for instance, like this year, we never, we hadn't had an A-one-one in high school, but because we had students leaving our H-one-one in middle school that weren't necessarily ready for a less restricted placement, we had to open an A-four-one in high school. There were enough students to do that with. If we had one student, it might be feasible to open a classroom for the one student. We have to look at another way to meet that need.
I guess I was more curious about the space like itself. You know, I mean, we are, we are having our, our building with a capital project. You know, if you needed to have all those classrooms, I mean, do you have the space?
Definitely not.
To be able to open the required classrooms? If we need them, then obviously that need changes every year, right?
Right. But there, in general, there's not a lot of extra space.
In slide nineteen, we were talking about some percentages and I'm just not, I'm not positive what those percentages relate to. Yep, slide nineteen. Nope, slide nineteen. So we talked about, so students with disability, eight percent or more of the day. So when we look at like the sixty, eighty percent, that's of the student body that has a disability, correct?
Yes, we're just looking at the students with disabilities.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Last question.
Yeah.
I apologize. So we talked about DHSN support. I know a couple of years ago, and Jen corrected me for a while, a couple of years ago, we had a grant, right? Which allowed us to bring in some support from DHSN. We realized that support was pretty handy, so we budgeted that support in for this year. Correct? Do we plan on carrying that forward to next year? Is there going to be a point, and I don't, is there going to be a point where we decide that these are necessary positions and we decide to try to hire them permanently or fill them permanently? Because, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I mean, is DHSN, are they always on staff every day? Or do we have, sometimes have spotty coverage?
Yes, the DHSN does have turnover and they do not always have the positions.
So that being said, I guess I'm just curious, if we're going year on year, if we're realizing these positions are necessary, are we going to get into a position where we're going to try to open those positions up internally?
I think that's certainly up for conversation. We actually just discussed with someone yesterday about how we need to with DHSNs and coming out of the plan.
I just ask, give it effort to make sure that you guys have, you know, all the staff and all the support.
And that's a, it's another budgetary issue as well.
Absolutely, hundred percent budgetary.
Because you're not only taking on the cost of the employee, because they're legacy costs as well.
Yep, for sure.
We'll say the most common feedback we get regarding DHSN staff, it's really our, my understanding, which is exactly, it's the DHSN counselors who really were just providing an obvious base, something that we're right behind us. Those are the ones that are most frequently vacant. So we do also crisis interventionist to work alongside us more directly. Those are current staff, but the counselors, instead of a parent driving their child to a therapist outside of school hours, the therapist kind of goes to a classroom and brings them to their office here. Those are the ones that we've had trouble having fill directly.
Would I be pretty stating that the issues that we are facing as a district, the money, the staff and all those things, would be similar to all districts in the region and statewide and nationwide at this point in time?
Absolutely, everybody's.
So it's not anything to us issue?
Some districts have virtual school psychologists or virtual speech.
We did that for your book, Adam, it was really useful. So now we have two.
Just in case.
Two in-house as opposed to one virtual. Nicole on that?
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, by the way. All right. Reports, superintendent of schools, Dustin Relash.
Thank you. So just a couple of things. First one for my report is something that's coming up later on in the agenda as a recommended action. It's the approval of an installment purchase for technology for the district. So it's a cooperative purchase agreement through CBES. CBS has kind of taken over that. It's a new kind of coaster that they've added on to be able to help us with some technology purchases. It's an installment purchase, we're looking at a hundred monitors to start replacing some of those that are coming near end of life. And it is four hundred computers themselves. The purpose of that is some of our computers, they're nearing end of life. I think it's probably, I believe it's next October, they won't accept any further Microsoft updates. So it's kind of a need at this point in time. This was sort of planned for, so we'll, we'll kind of do this as an installment purchase. Gary and his team worked on this over the summer and then worked with Jen and I because there were a few hiccups with that, to be honest, so we had to kind of work through those. But the goal is to have this go through tonight, hopefully, and then be able to put the purchase forward so that the technology can come here. So we might start to roll it out this year during some of our breaks when it's less impactful to start pushing that technology out. But this is, I mentioned in my memo to you, this is like a full replacement across the board. So just wanted to make sure you kind of knew a little bit about what that was. Next, strategic planning. So on the Tuesday prior to our holiday break, the parent guardian survey closed. I've contacted Alabrevay, our consulting company. They're working on the report at this point in time. I have a meeting scheduled for right after the holiday break to sit down with them, to start going through everything. And then from there, I hate to say this, but we're already like halfway through the schoolyard. Now is like the kicking into overdrive. It's the next phase where we meet with the strategic planning committee, meet with the board, potentially separately and say, okay, here's the results. Now, what are the steps we're going to take? So now we're going to enter the, we've done the gathering phase in terms of information. Now we're going to the actual planning phase, working in consultation with them. So I'm super excited about that, right at the time of budget season, so it's really fun to have both kind of going at the same time. But that's, I'm excited to see the results of that. And I think some of the stuff we've talked about so far this year is likely going to be part of what we see in the results of the data. So it'll help us kind of say, okay, here are the things, you know, those two, three priorities that we are going to focus on as an entire district. One of the other things that Nicole and I have talked about, the lead consultant, is our current mission and vision. As we see these results, I would like to have the conversation, do we need to look at our mission, vision? And should we be developing some core values? I think there could be some value in that across the board, but that's, that's a future conversation. Something Nicole had mentioned, even in her interview process, when we were looking at a prospective organization to go with. Next, the behavior practices, the executive summary that I shared with all of you in my Friday update. You know, obviously, you know, Nick and Polly just gave a presentation on specific to special ed, but that document was really kind of a broad overview of some of the practices we have now. You know, I could go piece by piece, I highlighted some things, but really ultimately, I think the important pieces, you know, when you look at background from NICE ed is kind of what they presented. There's been some updates in the last year, so twenty twenty-four, there were some updates that we had to kind of work through. At the end of the day, I will say the same thing that I say all the time. Every child who walks to the door is someone's baby and our ultimate goal is to give them the best experience they can in the best environment possible, and that changes all the time. And I think the biggest thing that I hope came through in my communication to all of you, and I've said it to our teachers, I've said it to our administrators, is we need time internally. I need time as the new superintendent to really dive in. What are we doing? You saw a lot of that in the report. And then where are some of the conversations that I think could be meaningful? The strategic planning process, I know I keep going back to that, but it's not a broken record. It's truly what we need to do to say, how do we make some movements if we need to for that continued growth and improvement? But, you know, that document took a little while, but together, ten pages total, because I wanted to make sure I could give you as much as I possibly could for you to digest. And I know you've had it since Friday, so you probably still have some links that you're diving into. And I know Drake and I talked, there's one link and then it links to another link and then it links to another link. So it's a lot of information. The FAQ document is one that I find to be very helpful.
You can get down the rabbit hole real fast, going from the link in the document and then that will, you know, that will note a state law and then you look that up and that's going to take you to fifteen pages of state law. You can definitely go down a rabbit hole going, going through that executive summary.
You can. So again, if there's any questions you have as you digest that, feel free to reach out to me. If I can't get the answer right away or can't get back to you right away, I'll make sure that I get you an answer as well. Just a quick reminder, I received an email from Dr. Davey. On January thirtieth, there's going to be a school board association dinner. We can send that out to all of you to see if you're available to attend that. So it's January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM. And I will have Chelsea send that out, so you can let us know if you'll be able to attend and then I will let Dr. Davey know. It's free for board members and the superintendent to attend. Next on my list, I'm going to do a very, very high-level overview of the Rockefeller Institute Foundation Aid Study. For those who haven't got the NISBA clips, half of the articles were related to the Foundation Aid Study. And NISBA just, I think it was this morning, shared out a really nice kind of summary document. If you didn't look at this yet, this is actually very, very helpful. Anyone who wants a copy, I don't have a problem sharing it with you as well. Some of the key pieces, when it looks at data, basically the goal or what was stated in the report, which is just over three hundred pages long, by the way, was we need to replace some of the outdated data points that are being used to help the formula. So for example, we're using two thousand, the year two thousand census data when it comes to some of these calculations. That's twenty-four years old at this point in time. There is another piece of data that's pulled, the regional cost index, which is seventeen years old at this point in time. So that's what this study kind of dove into. And I will say, whether it's the superintendent's council or NISBA, both organizations, as I've read, were pretty impressed with the level of detail that this report went into, considering I think they got the charge in, I don't know, March or April to develop a report, to study the foundation aid calculations and then provide a report by December first to the governor's office. We also weren't sure if that report was going to be released, but at five o'clock last Monday, it was dropped for everybody to look at. Some other pieces, just, just so you know, save harmless, that's a big topic of conversation. We are not a district who falls under that, but that is a guaranteed increase in foundation aid for school districts who may have a declining population. There is conversation about what that could look like as a recommendation. Rural sparsity is one that I thought was interesting for us. So it's looking at how that rural sparsity calculation could be changed to make sure that we're actually meeting the needs of students who live in rural environments. Because we are in a rural environment, I mean, we offer more as a larger district for this region, but relatively speaking, we're still pretty small when you look at some of the other districts across the state and we do live in a rural environment. So we know that what we offer has to be slightly different than a more urban or suburban environment. So that's something that's also interesting to look at. And then another piece that kind of alludes to some of the conversation here tonight is a regular review of the formula, like on a three to five-year basis, so that we're constantly updating it compared to what it's been. And mental health services. In all of the different, they did a lot of listening tours. Every one of those testimony was really focused in many areas on supporting students' mental health needs. And then that's a whole new layer for education that I don't think any of us who have been in the business for a while, even, like, we did that, but not to the level that we're expected to do so now to make sure that our students have what they need to be successful. They're coming in, again, everyone's baby, they're coming in and they just need more. And that's a strain on our system. I mean, your question was well taken, like, do we need more supports in that environment? And that's something that was a focus of this as well, is the state needs to do more to assist in that realm. And I'll be honest, it can't be competitive grants, which is some of the stuff that comes out now. It needs to be across the board, base level support for schools, for the mental health services that we have for our students. The report mentioned the property tax cap, but didn't go into much detail. But one of the other challenges is the foundation aid. That formula was created before the property tax law was put into effect. So there are some limits potentially to the amount of funding that we can raise through local taxes because you have to have, there's different levels of requirements you need if you want to go at a percentage higher than that cap piece. So overall, the report was, was pretty impressive and pretty extensive. So again, I'm going to continue to monitor it. We, at CSO meetings, we keep talking about it, what does it look like? And really, it's a matter of watching what the governor does with her budget presentation and then going through that legislative process. Two last little things, one auditorium sound system. I mentioned this to the board in my Friday update. I know it was brought up at one point in time that there were some challenges to the sound system. Gary pulled in an audiovisual company to look at the sound system for a day. They were able to identify a couple of areas that were not working correctly and were able to rectify them. I haven't personally been in the auditorium since that happened, but I'm being told that it's working a lot better than it was before, so.
So I was in there yesterday for the.
The concert.
For the concert.
Did it work?
It sounded great.
Wonderful.
I mean, I.
Good.
And after your, after your, your, your update, I was definitely paying attention.
Good, I'm glad.
No, and.
That's what I wanted to hear.
It was fantastic.
Good, 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 good. And the last thing, you know, we, it's this three-week window between, you know, our last holiday and the next holiday. And I just want to make sure that I end my report by wishing everyone, you know, happy, healthy and safe holiday season. I'm truly thankful to be a part of this district. I mean, it's crazy that it's been six months almost already, like, we're in the sixth month and it's unbelievable. Like, I'm so excited for what we've accomplished, what we're talking about and what we're going to move forward with. And I just want to remember, you know, thank you and happy holidays and remember to spend time with loved ones.
Oh, thank you.
If I could, just in light of your document that you sent us about behavior practices and supports, the summary, and conversation a few of us had at the end of the last meeting, a casual conversation about data, I think it would be very beneficial for this board to hear about absentee data and about like incidences of write-ups or behavioral interventions that are on a monthly basis for building. We're making decisions about how our policies are affecting change, but we're not looking at any data for that. And I think that, I know attendance has been a huge issue in all districts since COVID. And I know it's a huge issue at my school where I work and I think that's an important thing to look at. And in light of the conversation we had a couple of board meetings ago where there was concern about rooms being cleared and everything, I think it'd give us a good overall picture and see if we can see trends and maybe help affect some change.
Are you saying just like monthly basis, high level?
Yeah, just like, you know, we, our, our attendance percentage is, is, and at the high school is this, you know. Are there some high flyers? Of course, nothing specific, but is there a trend? Is, is there a certain grade level that's affecting more? Is, is this a problem across the board? When we're looking at discipline, is, is it, is it more so with a certain population? We had discussed previously, you know, those kinds of general things that we might start to see some trends that would help us in making these decisions.
Can I chime in on that? I do believe there's an annual requirement for administrative report to the board on annual attendance.
And that's something that we can definitely look at. I will tell you, it's funny you're asking the question about the attendance. Yesterday, in our administrator's team meeting, we had presentations from two different companies that provide that type of data. So currently, we use a system called School Meter to provide that data. It pulls all of that. It pulls all of that from state reports. We also looked at another platform called Tableau, which is run through NAREC, the Northeast Regional Information Center. That has some additional data points, and one of the things they showed us yesterday was, we could look at a building level or at a district level at our daily attendance rate, and it breaks it down. You can do like one week at a time, you can do one month at a time, you can do an entire school year, and it's color-coded. So the darker the green is, the better the attendance rate is. The lighter the color is, over from, you know, to a light green, to an orange, to a red, the less desirable the attendance is. We actually looked at, I think, the month of November, and we recognized that that one day, just before the Thanksgiving holiday, that day had a lower attendance rate, because it was one day, and then Tuesday was parent-teacher conferences. So that could inform, for kind of sake of conversation, should we have just a one day in that week, or should we have potentially looked at something different? I don't want to answer that question, but that's something that could be looked at. The other piece when it comes to referral data, which I think is kind of what, you know, you're looking at a little bit, it's tough, because I will say this from my previous experience, some, not all referrals are equal.
Correct.
I guess is the best way to say it. I have experience, and Jen will not like it if I say this, but there is another platform that could be used that pulls all of that data together. It is both usable, but it's not cheap to initially start up. But what it does is it puts minor and major offenses. So to me, that could be a helpful piece for us to look at, and we set what those offenses are that would be considered a major offense, and then it's a nice, easy visual. So, you know, and that's something that we would work with. It wouldn't be something that we just decide. We'd have a conversation with, you know, a committee and say, what is something that's minor? Like, not having a writing utensil for class versus something that's more on the major end, which we could all identify.
But to Curry's point, I mean, you know, as far as, you know, some of those, you know, referrals, you know, what have you, those are already being tracked.
Correct.
So, I mean, the idea of, you know, and I'm not even saying once a month, because I don't know what sort of a lift that is, but on at least a more frequent basis, just getting, you know, some high-level aggregate data, you know, I understand that, you know, implementing like a new tool to do it would obviously make it a lot easier, because again, I don't know how heavy of a lift that is to compile all that data. But, you know, some sort of reporting on a more frequent, on a more frequent basis, I think would be pretty good. And whether that was, and I don't want to, you know, put words in your mouth, but for me at least, whether that was in a, in an emailed report, you know, or a, or a presentation here, I mean, for me, that wouldn't make a huge difference.
Yeah. No, I can try to pull some things and see what might, what I'm showing you meets needs.
Right. I just think we would be better informed when we're making decisions about policy, when we're making decisions about, you know, like, the conversation about you just had. Is there a point where we're going to reach where we're going to say, we need to bring these types of counselors in, hire them here? These are the kinds of things we're going to be looking at.
I would suggest there's got to be a discipline summary in the software we're already using, just running that and sharing that with us once to see if that answers some of our questions, because if what we have already gives us what we need to look at, then there's no honey or lime to go find something. And it may, it may meet our needs.
So, so that, that being the case, like, before we, before we send you on a goose chase to start compiling a bunch of data, if it's all right with everybody, I'll put together a Google document that I'll share with everyone, go into the Google document and just make a couple bullet points. Hey, this is information that, you know, that I think would be good to see on a somewhat regular basis. Once we kind of get that list down, we can share that, so we're actually, you know, so that we're all, all in agreeance on the data that we want to see. I can, I can send that out this week.
I think, like Dustin said, major and minor referral type things. I think of, how many times does TCIS take me to be called? You know, that, I think that's important, that's, that is a measurement of the general mental health and well-being of the students, so.
And that's precisely what I'm talking about. You know what I mean? If we can, if we can come up with a, you know, a list, hey, this is, this is what we'd like to see on a fairly, you know, somewhat regular basis.
Yeah.
I think that we could compile that.
Does that system break down in four instances now?
It's been a while since I've been in the school tool system itself, so I may ask for some assistance from an administrator. But you can break it down. You can do reports for discipline. There is, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone over there, there is their own version of like a data kind of summary piece that exists. I forget what the title is. It was after I was out of that role. It's the discipline summary, right? Yeah, so let me pull in, let me look at that and see. It's not terribly challenging. It's a matter of, is that the right data to see? Do you know what I mean? Like, I want to make sure that it's going to give you what you're looking for.
I think if you pull that and send us that, then that will stimulate the questions, because we'll see what's already there and what isn't, and we might want to find a way to get at.
Okay.
Because I think it's a pretty thorough summary.
Let me, let me pull that and see what it looks like. Not the most user-friendly system at times.
It's not, no, we have to say it's very active.
Yeah. I think most people in the area do, so it's not the most useful, useful, user-friendly, but let me, let me see what I can put together.
When you pull that report, is that like a, hey, I guess I'm kind of asking the general group, when you pull that sort of report, is that a high-level overview? There's no, would there be any privacy concerns?
It depends on how you can pull the data.
Okay.
To make sure that it doesn't have that in it. I believe that there is a way to do that, so it doesn't drill down into the specific data.
Yeah, you just want to pull summary numbers of how many incidents of this type of behavior.
Yep.
And the, when you have that meeting to discuss the survey data.
Yes.
Who all is going to be at that meeting?
So from my understanding, the first meeting is with myself and them, and then from there, I don't know if the next phase is that it's the Board of Education, or if it's our Strategic Planning Committee. To me, I want to bring that committee back together pretty soon, because it's been all this data collection, it's been a lot of communication, survey links going out, so that's the part that I'm, that's why I want to meet with them, so I'm like, okay, what does our next phase look like?
Sure.
And can I get a nice timeline of what that needs to look like, so I can start planning those pieces out?
Understood.
And I have three things related to Dustin's report. First question, the computers, the 400, is that all instructional computers, like, for the teachers, or is it instructional, including support staff? Because I know some of the support staff have some aging computers.
I don't want to tell you that it's 100%, but from my understanding, it's for, it's pretty much most of the computers across the district for staff.
Secondly, I also, in the Rockefeller Report, there was language about the 4% limit on being above in your reserves. They're looking at moving that to 10%, and then some different things that happen if you're above a 10% limit, which is a good change for everybody, and we just have to slap on the hand letter every year. And finally, I would encourage all board members, if you haven't read the book, The Anxious Generation, read it. It's about the difference of kids in the classroom now than they were just 15 years ago, and it is powerful. And there really is some things that, no one's fault, it's just this experiment that has gone on with technology in the last 30 years that has really impacted kids. And I think if you read it, you'll start to see some of the reasons behind why we need all the counselors. Not a quick read, but it's really, really good. Okay, that's all I had.
That's all I had.
Everybody else all good? All right. Our business manager, Jen Parlow.
We have an operations committee meeting on Monday. We'll be going over several items with capital project, and I'll be giving you final data on the appropriations. So I'm compiling off, they're just about completed, and hope that I'll have all the numbers, and we're getting, we've made a little headway with getting some information from Siemens. So hopefully, I'll have all of that stuff for you guys on Monday, and then we can report in January to the full board. So that might be a little lengthy meeting, might get a little time, maybe. And then, other than that, we, the budget season has started. I know it seems crazy, but we're here. We actually met with the administrative teams yesterday. We went over wants, needs, and all that good stuff. We have all kinds of lists. So I begin compiling everything and seeing where things fall. Right now, ERS is going up significantly, the New York State Retirement System, not teachers, but employee retirement. So that's going to be a large increase. Health insurance is going to probably be a rather large increase. I'm thinking probably 10%-ish. TRS is staying pretty, pretty, such quo, so that's good, which is the Teachers Retirement System. Those are the figures we have as of right now. We've got some preliminary runs for our state aid. They're not great. So I would have hoped for more, but this Foundation Aid formula, it could be a good thing, it could not be a good thing, depending on what pieces they hold to put into this formula. It's going to be very interesting to see what happens. So that's where we're at with that. And next, in January, I'll have the five-year plan that we have, as best as we have with those numbers, and I'll start giving you the preliminary on tax calculation this one. So we'll have all kinds of info from the cabinet. That's it.
Our building principals, Ms. Duffy Nelson.
Or.
Or.
She was unable to be with us this evening, so I have the very fun task of recording on our sometimes strange, mostly fun, always busy middle school.
Well, thank you.
So prior to Thanksgiving break, we held our first, first quarter Eagle Pride Assembly, where we recognize a collective 97 students who are making honor roll and 184 students who are making pie in the bowl. It's really exciting. A huge shout-out to our teachers, teaching assistants, and aides for their hard work and dedication to our students. Definitely show. I feel like the rest of this is kind of going to answer or give some information to things you've been talking about. It's timely. Every month, we have an attendance challenge to try to boost our attendance numbers. This past month, we had our pie in the face attendance challenge. So for every day that a class came had over 95% attendance, a new person, a new victim, got to be pie in the face. We had five people total. Principal Nelson, myself, Mrs. Am, our school nurse, Ms. Sulia, and Mr. Cutier each received a pie that day. There was a lot of laughter, and I will say that Mr. Cutier currently holds the largest amount or current record for the most-tall tickets. When the students heard his name, they flooded the hallways, I'm told, and his bucket of tickets actually became a large box. So it was great to have him and all of our other volunteers. Kids had a good time. And building our foundation for restorative practices, which we're using right in conjunction with consequences and looking at discipline systems, our counselors have been going into classes and holding community building circles with our students, and they've really been enjoying it. The adults also are saying it's a good bucket holding time, but building those relationships, so we need to have constantly restorative circles. The students are accustomed to the practice, so those have been successful. With all of our inclusion, we have been working with our behavioral consultant, Ms. Donahue, and she has been, sorry, I don't think I need this, she has been pushing into grade-level classes the past month or two, working with students on inclusive practicing, because in middle school, you're not always competent and comfortable with who you are, and so you might not be your most welcoming self. And so we noticed that our students needed some help with that. So she's been going in and working with the students on being inclusive, and that's also been really successful. Our students are engaged, asking really great questions, and working with activities and how to be better community members. And we're really appreciative of this work that she's doing, and it's really an important endeavor to help us build a stronger school community. So we're seeing some success with that, and again, appreciate it. Despite Mother Nature, our winter concert last night was standing room only. We did bring in folding chairs, so nobody had to actually stand, but we did have to provide extra seating. Mrs. Storyak and Ms. Brunet led our middle school musicians through a wonderful and festive evening. It was a great one. And we're really proud. We partnered with the Red Cross and had our first blood drive. They had set a goal for us for 20 units of blood, and we far out exceeded, sorry, exceeded that. We got 31 units, or sorry, 33, potentially impacting 93 lives. So there was a great showing from our faculty, our staff, parents, I saw some parents coming in and rolling up their sleeves, and community members. So it was a good, north-country showing. And I believe that is all I have for this. Pass it on.
Thank you.
Full disclosure, I was not able to get pie in the face on that day, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, but I do have a rain check for the next.
We saved, actually, we saved your bucket of tickets.
Wonderful. Super excited.
Can we, can we put tickets?
Absolutely. You can come. I think it'd be great.
Ms. Parkham.
Hi, everybody. It's really hard each time you come up here to take just a few things to share, so hopefully I pick ones that are good that you want to hear about. I'd like to first of all, highlight our partnership with GTS and the Ready for Rio program. Out of it today, we have six students from the high school that are coming down to three classrooms of EES throughout the day to work with us, working with Lucy Ward to accomplish this. So just so you're aware, so students come down, they have to apply to be an intern. They interview with me, and I look at what their needs are, what their assignments are, what their schedules are, and what our staff needs are, see if we can match that up, because I can work about a school day. And they, when they get matched up, they fill out intern to contact, and they commit to go to work every day, based on their schedule. Could be odd days, even days with typical place every day. New this year is when we do their time piece, there's an evaluation piece every single week a teacher fills out for them, that has items on there like job performance, punctuality, attendance, attitude, their skills, their performing there, and it's judged every single week. And it's already been a good conversation piece with students who are maybe need a little bit of guidance in that area, so that's, that's really great. And it's ready for them to be, like I said, very successful. And we have our BaaS period as well, so we end an hour after Milton West School does, obviously. And so students, if they have the availability, they either arrive home or they drive. We have two students coming down working the BaaS time as well, working with those kids during that time. Two of the things I want to highlight for you are two different focuses of our teachers right now. So our K2 has done a very diligent job working with our science reading, strategies and concepts in the classroom, met with those groups today, talking about fidelity, integrity, and how every single classroom is on pace with that grade level. So I'm seeing a lot more of that fidelity than was in previous years. It's going very, very well. Along with this, we have our new model where our interventionists come into the classrooms every single day to provide small reading instruction at our tier-one level, so every single classroom has small group reading instruction, which theoretically is happening in the past as well, but it's far easier when you have two or three bodies in that room to provide that small reading instruction. So it's, it's far more successful this year, in my opinion. Our grade three through five, it seems early, we'll be talking about how the year's progressing. Now we're looking at a bunch of times and this relationship, a few things too. We had our state testing preparation today with Mary Swanson, so that's up and rolling. And our January simulation date is coming up soon, so we have Mr. Crevera working with our teachers on New York State Test Prep. He's our library senior specialist, and we're just rocking along, we're going to test him, which seems crazy, but simulation's already in January, so staff pre-kedified are just rocking along. Want to talk to him?
Thank you. And our ex-officio is not here. Committee reports. Hall of Fame.
So we had a Hall of Fame committee meeting. I apologize if I don't remember the date. They kind of ran together from before the holiday to after the holiday. It was a good meeting. We had a little bit less participation than I think I would have, I would have preferred to see. However, you know, Jason was there, and we talked about kind of the upcoming season for the Hall of Fame. If you were watching our social media platforms, you saw that we pushed out the first kind of call for nominees. Our communications specialist has helped with that. If you notice the injuries a little bit flashier, so we're working on some of those things as well. One of the things that we talked about is how we want to plan for the induction ceremony. Last year was slightly different. There was a lot of positive feedback in regards to that from the committee members who were present. And then we also talked about the bylaws that are there, and some of the funding streams, And then, we also talked about the bylaws that are there, and some of the funding streams, and kind of what that needs to look like. So we have another meeting that we're going to schedule kind of early into the new year to say, okay, let's really solidify the dates for the induction ceremony, the nominee process, and then looking at the bylaws, because there's certain people that are supposed to be part of that group that we don't have representation, we've done our reach-out for, so we're going to talk about what that looks like or what we might need to update there. But it was a really, I thought it was a very productive meeting. Small number of people, we did do outreach afterwards, say, hey, we're still looking for a member of your group or of your group, so we're hoping that that sees a little bit of an increase in numbers.
Public comment? Is there anybody here for public comment? For five minutes, resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Number six, CSC, CPSE, and 504 recommendations. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated twelve-ten-twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
Wait, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Personnel. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education the following resolution on this consent agenda, resignations and appointments be and are hereby approved. Can I have a motion?
Motion, Chris.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Eight policies. All of these policies are up for second reading and adoption. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies: nondiscrimination, equal opportunity, sexual harassment, sexual harassment in the workplace, sex discrimination, sex-based harassment under Title IX. Can I have a motion?
Motion, Curry. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Financial. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfers and installment agreement in the CVES be and are hereby approved. Can I have a motion?
John.
Second, can I have second?
Wait.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Oh, it's a real fault. Sorry.
Clay Anderson?
Yes.
Drake Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Bebo?
Yes.
Eric Daley?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Godway?
Yes.
Cory Jolker?
Yes.
Jason Miller?
Yes.
One more public comment? No one is here. Yep, we did, at our agenda-setting meeting, we did start to have a conversation, Chris, based on what you, what you sent about potentially having a concession stand, you know, that we run ourselves at sporting events. We talked about a lot of different ways something like that could be implemented, and Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, that was, there had actually already kind of been some conversations had that were along that vein.
Yeah, there have been some conversations along that vein. I did talk with Jen afterwards as well to see what discussions have happened previously, and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong with anything I say, but it seems like that's been discussed in the past. There's a pretty significant cost, we were to build a permanent structure, and it's not, like, building aid doesn't support something like that.
It has to be donations, I know that pretty much.
No.
Doesn't?
No, but it doesn't have building aid, so it's one-hundred percent funded by the taxpayer.
Okay. Yes, yep, and it still has to go through, because it's a permanent structure, has to go through the SED approval process like anything else, so.
What about food truck?
So that is something that is a ongoing conversation.
Nope, not ongoing.
Yeah, it's an ongoing conversation, that's one of the things that has, that was floated to me a little bit, a couple months ago at this point in time, so having more conversations about that. I know that one of the reasons or the conversation is around trying to have other clubs and, you know, different organizations be able to do some fundraising. So, a couple pieces to this, one is if food is being served, so hot food, we would need to go through the health department, and whether or not that's a club that chooses to take that on, that's a, that's a challenge. If it's, if it's us as a district, then we assume a lot of, we assume the potential liability, and if it's under our cafeteria, that means our cafeteria manager then has to be responsible, it has to be there.
And if something goes wrong with that cart, and the health department shuts that down, they can take and shut our cafeteria down, because it's all going to be under one umbrella.
That would be the, the commercial kitchen, that would be the prep place for the.
So what's the one we used to have? Did laws change, Vincent? We used to have one out here in the football field, twenty-something years ago when I was in school.
I don't even know anything about that.
Yeah, we used to have a trailer right here at the end. The twenty-something.
Twenty-something.
Yeah, we used to run.
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think things have changed a little bit. I know that the health, the health department is very much a stickler for these things now more than ever, and I only know that through my brother's business, he's tried to have food trucks and stuff in Clinton County particularly, is very difficult when it comes to that. You go down to Essex County, and the trucks all replaced.
I, I think the, the potential benefit, you know, from like, from a fundraising standpoint, you know, the fact that, I mean, if you've been to a sporting event and you look at the prices on the food truck, you know, and it's, you know, and it's different food trucks that come, I think, right?
I wasn't able to find out too.
Usually, usually just Tammies, normally, normally.
But, I mean, that. And we do receive, because that was a question that was actually asked, we do receive some of that back. She does do a donation back to us as well, which I didn't have at the time.
Yeah.
So that does go back to.
She usually gives it to the booster club.
Yeah.
She does a donation.
What's the percentage typically?
I, I don't know what she does as a percentage, or.
Just out of the goodness of her heart?
With the school, we're not involved in that, so I, I don't know.
I work, if it's five dollars for every nine-dollar hot dog, maybe that, that would be beneficial.
She has to take on all the liability, so there isn't a large cost to her, I'm sure, to have that food truck, because of all of the things we're talking about.
Absolutely, no, and that's completely understood, but I'm, I'm not saying it's an easy button.
No.
Right? But, you know, I mean, to, you know, I, I go to sporting events, you know, I know, I know a lot of us do, you know, I mean, the, the prices aren't cheap, you know, and I, I could see a potential benefit of, you know, of us running our own, you know, and I, you know, different models, you know, could it be different clubs that, that chose to run it under the supervision of, you know, kind of a, you know, a kitchen professional? You know, I don't know how that works, but I, I think it's at least worth investigating.
I don't think it's, it's much different than having our own school store here. You sell candy bar in a school store, kid gets sick, we're liable for.
No, no, it's not, anything, it would, we're talking about hot food where the county gets involved. If it's prepackaged food, you're fine.
All right, so what if we had, you know, instead of us making it, we have businesses that we buy pizzas from, we serve it?
Yeah, everything still has to be tent, yeah.
Tent wise, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're really, it's tough.
They will go up.
Yes, they will.
Yes.
If they pull that permit, if it's the cafeteria's permit that we're working under, which I, if they pull that permit, that means I can't serve lunch either, I can't serve breakfast, I can't do snack. So it, it, it's, yes, it's a great idea, but there are implications that could be bigger than just the food truck.
Yeah, no, and I, I think it would at least be interesting to understand what the potential benefit is, and, I mean, you, obviously you have, there is a risk, obviously, I mean, there's a risk in any, any service, you know, especially food service, but I think it would be interesting to see, you know, where those way out benefits versus risk.
Can Dustin talk to other superintendents and see what other districts are currently doing?
I can absolutely do that. We, we, I will say that we are having some internal conversations, I've talked with a couple advisors to say, what could we do, what could this look like? There are a couple of other pieces to this, so like, years ago, and I don't know, I'll talk to the superintendents to see, John, I think it's a good idea, but one of the pieces is, is that organizations right now, so if we have a club that wants to, like, come to a football game and set up a tent and sell candy or something, they're, they're not disallowed to do that, like, the FFA has done that, some organizations have chosen to do that, but you need to have, like, the advisor has to be able to be there to kind of oversee, and you have to have the students who are able to be there as well. That's one thing that, over the course of the last ten years, you don't necessarily see as much participation for those type of pieces. I'm not saying we wouldn't have that here, but that's, that is something that's available already, because I asked that question, like, is there anything saying that a team or a group can't? The answer is that's no, they, they can right now, if they wanted to. So student club, I'd say, hey, we're going to purchase some candy, so we have it available for sale, we'll put their pricing together, a good example, like, the FFA did that at one of the football games this past fall. So those options do exist, but we're willing to have more conversations. I think my greatest level of potential concern, or at least greatest conversation, is the hot food piece. That's where we would have the greatest piece of it, where candy or like ice cream, prepackaged food, that would be a different kind of conversation piece, and, you know, what other organizations want to be a part of, you know, one organization who kind of says, okay, we're going to buy this and we're going to have it ready to go, we'll share that profit piece. So my thought is having some internal conversations with our club advisors and those organizations or the athletic organizations, say, do you want, are you interested in this, and would you have a commitment to it? I think that'd be a point, a part of the conversation.
I think another thing that would be good to know is where's the fine line? So you can serve these foods, but ask them to eat the kitchen cafeteria license?
I'd really like to stay away from that.
No, no, no.
Let the booster club take it.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but then what can they serve?
Yeah.
To not fall underneath the cafeteria, we'll call them licenser firm. So that way, there's no gray area. If a booster club or someone wants to serve something, you can do everything to the right because it doesn't fall where it's cafeteria.
So it wasn't just, I didn't bring it up specifically for booster club issues, I mean, we have a lot of clubs all the time, and we don't have money to give them. Those clubs could be the ones that could benefit from this. So it wouldn't be just necessarily, because booster clubs is its own separate entity.
Yeah.
I mean, you sit here when they come in asking us, telling all the great things the kids do, but they don't have the funds to do anything else, this would have been a good way to provide those ones, those kids work that, everything they have to do.
And, and they, and they could still set up and buy, you know, go to the Sam's mother, buy candy bars and prepackaged stuff, and, and they could still do all of that. They, they don't need, they don't need us to, to do anything for that kind of thing. And see if they, I mean, would you make huge money? Probably not, but you definitely.
Well, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have a separate food truck coming in to do that if we had our own kids trying to.
Right, but if.
That issue.
Right, if the kids are serving hot food, then that, that's, that's when we, but if they're just doing the prepackaged stuff, they could start doing that at the basketball games next week.
Other schools do do it. Osable does it, Peru does it, so there is a way.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there's probably two issues here, one is the price gouging, that is extraordinary at these games where, for a family of, for two kids, you might get into forty dollars, thirty, forty dollars. You can benefit from that by charging your own five-dollar or six-dollar Fenway franc and the three-dollar packet of M&amp;Ms, and, and put that in your own pockets, people are willing to pay it, so it's supply and demand. But the other part is, lower, or, or get into a contractual piece, where no, you can still charge the six-dollar hot dog, and we benefit, and you must donate three thousand dollars. I imagine they take on that over a season, it's probably quite significant for the food truck, so, and quite significant for Peru, it's quite significant for Osable. Osable charges, I think, three fifty for their hot dog. Again, half the cost, but again, they're benefiting, and that's going to whatever part of the school that they wish, so, I mean, two separate issues, but, I mean, I think you can get a contractual piece and leave the prices alone, and you benefit, or you get into the school piece like other schools do, I mean, the will is, will is the way, other schools do it, and so can we, and we take the money as a whole. So, I mean, I think, either way, we need to benefit.
I see the kids benefit from it.
That's exactly right.
With some other external energy.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know what the take is, I know we'll never know that, but I imagine it's quite significant, I mean, the lines are long, the hot dogs run out, I mean, you can imagine two hundred dogs at a football game, somebody do the math for me on that. I mean, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money that goes to these academic parts that come here and have asked for money, and the money's not available to them. And I agree with you, there's an avenue of attack, we should take advantage of it versus being risk mitigating as to what, you know, we'll have to get some licensure from the county, other schools do it, and so can we, so.
I, I believe some of the other schools do use their booster clubs.
But they sell food out of the schools. Peru sells it right out of their, other school.
So the booster club gets a permit through the county, or, so, so the health department, so it protects the school's food service.
Right.
So there's not that risk, you mitigate, you, you, you don't have that risk.
Who's kitchen are they under that?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's the, it could be someone on the club has a business that has a kitchen.
Why does it have to be so difficult?
Or if the, if the food cart is.
This is too easy.
Because you just have to have a commercial kitchen.
Right.
You can't have that food truck, because the food truck has to be registered to a commercial kitchen.
But the answer is, there's a way, let's figure it out.
And, and again, like I said, I, I appreciate the risk, but I think there's potential benefit that is worth investigating, and then as a group, we can say, look, here's all the risks, and here's where the benefits lie. And we're, we're going to do an assessment, you know, that says, hey, you know, the, the benefits outweigh the risks, or, or they don't, you know, I, we don't know without really investigating. Yeah, I can talk to the other school districts, we're meeting later this week, I can figure out kind of what they do, because that is, my one piece would be, I do not want to jeopardize our ability to serve food, you know, that's a big one, but if there are other ways, you know, and I, some of the, the stands, I know, it's like, to Jen's point, the food prep is done right there, like, they have a hot dog roller, they have, you know, nachos and cheese, it's right there, so it's kind of its separate piece, it does keep that separation. But I will ask those questions and be able to give you some type of summary with that information. Maybe not at the next board meeting, but I'll try to get something to you as soon as I can.
Sure. Good on that?
Yes.
Public comment? I always kind of feel like these are, these are mixed up in order, because the clerk pro tem should, in theory, be after, right, because you gotta re-approve the executive session and then decide on a clerk pro tem?
That's because I'm still here to do, I'm technically still in clerk, so you appoint them before I leave. Before you want to.
All right.